That's scheduled for August 18th. We think that they've attempted to address your comments and if there's anything else that would be required, you know, for viewing by the public, then we expect to provide some direction on that. At the last meeting, we did discuss extending the conservation easement on Lot 4 to the northwestern portion of the parcel. That hasn't been shown on the plan yet. We recommend that you confirm that the elevations submitted are sufficient in demonstrating the color of the proposed homes. The applicant has submitted revised ARB materials and actually listed the materials on each elevation, which we think is appropriate. There was a request for the change in trim color on Lot 6, so we recommend that be reviewed for adequacy in the plans that were submitted, and if anything additional is required, the applicant should know. We did review the tree removal plans and had a few comments on some specific locations for the board to consider. And we also just noted that we defer to NPV on the basement sizing that was requested at the last meeting. We did have a couple of comments on the plans for the applicant to confirm, which really are simple drafting considerations, but one of the considerations was the construction of the retaining walls in relation to the disturbance limits.
Lot 4 and Lot 6?
Yes, that's right. So if they need to be moved away from the disturbance limits to construct those, that's just our comment. And then also, as discussed at the last meeting, we included some recommended conditions for your action related to compliance with the prior approval and certain stormwater improvements, as well as, you know, conditions regarding the disturbance limits and maintaining those for you to consider. And I think that's mostly it, unless the board has any questions.
Any questions for Natalie? Okay, Jonathan?
The only thing that I'll add to Natalie's comments is, we noticed that on sheets 701 and 702, the landscaping sheets, there isn't a key to the landscaping plan symbols. You can kind of guess what they all mean, but if you could add a key to the plan symbols on those two sheets. Other than that, our previous comments were addressed, and I won't repeat any of Natalie's comments.
Any questions for Jonathan? Any questions for the applicant?
I know I asked you this at the last meeting, but I'm still confused. Because of, on the individual maps that you gave us?
Right.
So you said Lot 1, if you're looking at Summit, Lot 1. Lot 2 has the existing house, correct?
Mm-hmm.
It says Lot 2 is a vacant lot.
Why does it say that on the site plan?
Yeah. This is Lot 2. It says vacant lot. Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so this has a house.
That's a small paloney one.
It's what?
It's a small paloney one.
On this one?
On this one?
Yeah.
And this white house over here.
Right.
Right.
But it says vacant lot.
We can fix that, right?
Just want to make sure.
That's an easy one.
Thank you.
We need a color board, don't we?
Yeah, we just saw that thing that we passed.
What we will need before the next meeting is like a color board?
Right.
With the actual sample chips and stuff on it so people can touch.
Chips on it for each house?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a little something on oak tag with the actual colored chips on it. Finishes that.
Roofing siding.
Mm-hmm.
Roofing siding, stained colors on Lot 4 and 9.
Whatever you have listed on your ARB has got to be, just so people can see what it looks like in real life. Overall, I mean, we're ready to push this to a public hearing. How does everybody feel overall designs? Are we still comfortable, colors, designs, after the recent middle? No other changes we're looking for the applicant to make here?
Okay.
How do we feel about ridge preservation?
With the changes, I'm okay with the ridge.
Okay, with the changes in color and stuff like that, right?
Not reflective glass on the back of those houses.
All the houses, all four sides, wasn't that a comment?
That was a recommendation of ours, and I think it's typical and consistent with prior approvals.
Not just the backside all the way around?
I spoke with Jonathan about it as well. It sort of doesn't make sense to limit it to just one side of each home and should be on all, off facades.
That's fine.
And then we will have the updated conservation easement as well.
Right, okay.
Anything else we're concerned, we want to have addressed?
Just the trees that are being taken down on Lot 4, those are marked, or those are just marked on the map? Are they marked in the field?
Should be marked in the field. I was told they're marked, I haven't looked.
Okay. We can go up there.
Yeah, we have the notice to inspect, so.
And the way I counted it, it's 11 trees total, right? Or maybe you don't know.
On Lot 4?
On Lot 4.
She's going to hold it to it.
All I know, all I know is it's, all five lots are removing, removing, removing 33 trees.
Okay, yeah, no, I just was looking at Lot 4.
So I don't know.
Okay. I mean, I counted them on the map, and I'm sure that these must be the ones.
Lot number 4, 11, you think, okay. I'll check it and verify.
And you're good with the minor issues you have to fix as far as the memos go, right?
Right.
Okay. Anything else with applicant, any comments, concerns? I see Rick looking over his mask.
Yes, the only thing I would ask to see whether the board wants the applicant to revise the plans in accordance with the memos and comments made tonight prior, so that it's available for the public, or you will be carrying those as conditions for, to be made prior to plan signing.
I think, given the changes, we could probably make those as conditions prior to signing, they're relatively minor, but that they will be conditioned to the resolutions and you won't get a building permit unless that stuff is met.
Of course.
So either way, you got to fix it, so.
Yeah, whatever, revise it eventually.
Yeah, so whatever you want to do it, but we won't make it have it in for next meeting. Just the color boards is what we'll need. Anything else?
I just want to ask about that one tree. Again, on Lot 4, that one tree in the front of the, by the house, this one, this 36-inch one, there's no way that can be saved, right? That's got to come out because of the...
According to the engineer.
Yeah, it's got to come out.
I'm beginning to think it has your initials or something. Do you want me to take it out?
We're not supposed to tell. No, it's just, it's a big tree. Hey, I'll take it. It's just that it's such a big tree. That's, I think that's the biggest one that's being taken out.
Should be put over, saved.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was going to say.
I think we lost one and saved three, right?
Yeah, that's, yeah. I just was wondering if it was anyway, but, okay. Nope, just wondering. Thank you.
Colors, ridge, conditions, we're good. Speak now or forever.
Good.
Hold your peace.
Okay.
That's what we picked.
Yes, those are the colors we picked.
All right, all right, great.
You get off easy tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Review revise, next item on the agenda, Hartman Hudson Point ARB. Review revised plans submitted for ARB of proposed addition to an existing single-family dwelling. Said property is located in mine Hudson Point and is known as the Village Woodrate Tax Map, Section 255, Block 1, Lot 2. Hartman Hudson Point ARB. I think he just went to the...
Please.
I know, he said, "I'll give him a second." I just saw him. Where's the bell if you need one?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Natalie just brought up a good point. Did you want to authorize us to draft a resolution for GLUC for the next meeting for the public hearing? Or do you want to do that at the public hearing?
I don't see the harm in having them drafted. We could always make changes. We could always make changes that night if anything comes up. Save the applicant a trip if nothing comes up, if anything. I'll make a motion to authorize counsel produce a draft notice of a resolution of approval for GLUC.
I'll second.
Second by standing. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Good catch, Natalie.
That's what I'm here for.
Mine Hudson Point?
Yes.
You're up.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. My name is Shloem Miguel. I'm an assistant for Larry Hartman. He was representing this project with the last few meetings. So we are back here. The last meeting was regarding the two items, caused the neighbor on the side that we have added trees to the right side, and then regarding the siding, which Larry was in contact. He emailed that. He has in the previous, that it's approved in this area siding. And also, the existing house has siding, so we're just continuing for this, for the addition, the same color, the same material. And on the left side, we have trees, but we got some comments on that because the spacing of the trees.
Okay.
And we have addressed that on the site plan. I have here 15 copies. And also, was a comment about the square feet on the site plan. I also add that. And was a comment about the windows. I also have plans, which I fixed that. So I think we have addressed everything, so let me know if any comments, any additional.
All right, you know we can't take submissions at the meeting, right?
I know, I just letting know that.
Setting expectations.
Yes. I'm just letting know that we are here a few months, so we tried to address everything what was requested, and there's just two minor things which I can submit tomorrow.
Yeah.
And if possible, to make a vote tonight to approve that addition.
All right. Jonathan, I know you've had a memo, right?
Yes. Go ahead. You have a memorandum from NPV dated July 29th, and we discussed at length that in order to mitigate that long, 80-foot-long wall, you wanted to have trees planted on the, on the property line on the right side of the house. And they've specified 11, 11 trees at nine feet apart. And in our comment number two, the, we just wanted you to review that to see if you felt that mitigated, mitigated the length of the wall as you wished. And if we reduce the spacing down to eight feet, we would want to see an additional tree added to the line. Also, we noted in the renderings where there was a simulation of how it would look after the plantings, those are arborvitae's in the simulation, so the, but what they're specifying are conifer trees, Norway maple, blue spruce, and white pine. So we, you know, we'd want a rendering that showed Norway spruce, et cetera, rather than the arborvitae. We did ask for building square footage labels on the plans and the, the building height, specific building height to be listed in the bulk requirements table. And we asked for a note that anti-reflection window film be applied to any low-e windows. And we had said with southerly exposures, I think in the last application, we had changed that to just do that, apply the film on all the windows. So I think to be consistent, you'd want to do that on all windows rather than just the ones with southerly exposures. That's a review of my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the memo.
Any questions for Jonathan? How do we feel about the overall application? I know the applicant has one submittal just to show that these, in compliance with the requests that we've made overall. Is there any other feedback, or are we okay with how this looks? I think...
So the blue spruce, whatever, they're going to be fuller than the arborvitae, right? They tend to be fuller?
They're like Christmas trees, don't they?
Yeah, they will be full, but mostly they'll grow to be really big trees. Arborvitae just don't grow as large. I think you'd want those, those, those trees rather than arborvitae, which is, arborvitae's still considered a tree, but it's, it's more like a very big shrub, in my mind.
Isn't arborvitae deer food, though? Isn't arborvitae deer food, though? Don't they get eaten by the deer?
I believe they do.
I don't, I'm really not, deer eat everything that's young and small.
They do find them delicious, right? Yeah. I had a problem, that's why I had...
Just one comment that on the site plan, the previous site plan, that says evergreen or this. So basically, I think the memorandum has some, in the, in the submittal, I have also evergreen, so. And my treaty was just for the picture, for the idea to show what it's going to be, but the actual trees will be planted based on the site plan, so this is, take care on that.
So the rendering was just to give you the visualization of the buffer being provided there.
Yes. So what it says is proposed evergreen screening mix of white pine, blue spruce, and Norway spruce. So the site plan would control, which doesn't include arborvitae. So that's why I was questioning the rendering that showed arborvitae.
Okay, so let's not worry about the rendering. What's on the site plan?
On the site plan is, or evergreen, is evergreen, spacing nine feet on center, 50 feet height, mats of white maple, blue spruce. This on the site plan.
Okay, because that would be the controlling document going forward, not, not whatever renderings were put in. That's the controlling document.
Right.
Okay.
I guess my question is, I mean, I have blue spruce on my property, and I know how big they are. They're, we would buy the ball trees for Christmas trees, and that was 20 years, and over that time, I mean, they're, besides being tall, they're also...
Yes.
Wide, sorry. So is nine feet, are they going to like crowd each other at nine feet?
The, the, the state recommends eight-foot spacing.
Okay.
Okay. I'm sure there's, I was going to say, I'm sure there's a guide that they use to put them in with.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Other questions or concerns?
And if they, for some reason, if they die, is that in perpetuity?
I was just going to say, is that perpetuity?
We would have that in whatever, whenever you're going to go ahead and authorize a resolution, yes. For plantings, we always include that, that they must be maintained in perpetuity in a vibrant condition.
And that's also in the code as well.
Okay.
The code backs you up with that.
I know there was questions about the siding too, right? We had concerns, or am I confusing applications now?
Well, we did, but because it was going to match the existing.
It's matched the existing, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. But the other...
If it's an addition, they're matching the siding.
Right, Rick? We're still able to do that on a case-by-case basis because it's matching an existing?
Yes, you, consistent with what you have done in the past, is that if it's not a new home, but in fact, it's an addition to an existing home, and there was authorized siding on that particular home, then you have allowed the addition to match the existing siding.
Okay. All right. We've got one more submittal, but kind of feel like we're in a weird spot here. The submittal fixes landscaping? And what else was on that?
Yes, and the submittal fixed also the concern about the height.
The height is labeled and the square footage.
Yes, because the height was not labeled because we didn't visit the existing house, and the site engineer just showed less than 35, but it's 27 and something. So now I have labeled that.
And you can drop that stuff off tomorrow? That stuff will be stamped in tomorrow?
Yes.
All right. Because of the, how long this is kicking around, what I, what I want to do, and it's not something we normally do, but because of how long this has been around, I want to authorize counsel for a draft resolution.
For the next meeting?
For the next meeting. We can look over the submittals. The submittals will be, if you're in, this is, you having them stamped in tomorrow so that I can get them to my consultants just to make sure everything is kosher. Okay, I'm sorry. Is everything is correct on them, and then we can go from there. So you can get them in stamped in tomorrow, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the only other thing is, for purposes of a resolution, do you want what is usually a typical condition, that they must comply with all the comments in the latest NPV memo?
Yes. Yep. So we'll have that. If there's any additional comments, we can have NPV issue a new memo that they would have to be corrected before the plans would be signed. I don't want to keep holding this applicant up on this. Hmm? We had a public hearing, so we're good. All right, so I'm going to offer counsel, I'm going to offer motions to have counsel draft a resolution of approval for this application.
I'll second.
Second by Tommy. Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so it will be on the next agenda. You'll have to get those stamped in tomorrow.
Okay.
And we'll vote on it at our next meeting, which is...
Steve Wixson.
Okay?
Thanks so much.
You're welcome, sir. So as long as everything's good, and we should be, we should be good for our next meeting then.
Okay, thanks so much.
Cody, Inc., review and discuss revised documents submitted for site plan approval of a two-story 4,000-square-foot gross floor area addition to existing school McPhu Building. Said property is located on Yoel Drive off County Route 105 in Highland Mills and is known as the Village Woodrate Taskmap of Section 25-45.1 and 45.2.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pat Hutton, MJS Engineering Land Surveying.
You want to just give us a thousand, it's been a few months since you've been here. You want to do the 1,000-foot view, and then we'll go to our consultants?
Sure. Basically, we've reviewed, we've revised the plan to show the existing conditions as opposed to the previous plan, which showed some of the design conditions. We've addressed many of the issues as far as drainage, but in essence, we're, we've taken off a lot of things that aren't perfect to the small improvement of the 4,000-square-foot As far as the building's concerned, we had previously submitted a, a, a view of the building, but it is going to match the existing building. There'll be no change in appearance of it. It'll be the exact same thing.
Did you, or someone from your office should have received the memorandum for Phillip Greeley for our traffic consultant, or some questions that they had?
I did not receive anything from a traffic consultant, no.
Okay. I will make sure it gets to you. He had, they had four or five questions regarding...
On-site or off-site?
On-site, and onsite questions. Parking, some ESO referrals, we have to do some pedestrian activity. I'll get this memo over to you.
Appreciate it.
I'll present it to you, so they'll just, we'll have to get these questions answered before you, or when you appear before us the next time. Natalie, you want to go first?
Sure.
I see you shuffling, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I was actually looking for Phil's memo, but that's all right. So again, this application has a lot of history before prior planning boards. One of the things that I wanted to just kind of go over, because I know there were some questions about the size of the addition and what was approved previously and the existing building footprint, and this is something that the applicant should really address with their next submission, and I know it's in accordance with comments that have been received from others, but essentially, in 2008, the planning board approved two additions. One addition was 4,000 square feet with a building footprint of 2,000 square feet, but it was two stories. That's the one that's before you now. The other addition was 7,800 square feet with a building footprint of 3,900 square feet. The existing building at that time was approximately 3,900 square feet too, so now, when the building that you're looking at on this current plan is 7,000... So now, when the building that you're looking at on this current plan is 7,800 square feet. So that's a little confusing, but that's sort of the gist of it. And I can answer any questions that you have on that. So again, they're here before you because in September 2020, the applicant tried to secure a building permit for the 4,000-square-foot addition, and since construction had ceased for more than six months, the building inspector finds that, you know, in accordance with the code, and that approval, the site plan had expired, and they needed to reapply before the board. We had appined previously that, you know, some of the review from the prior approval could be relied upon based on, you know, the in-depth review at that time. But we believe based on this recent submittal that shows the as-built conditions of the site, there are some additional questions that we have in addition to the prior memo that we distributed. So although the applicant has revised the plans to reflect the as-built condition, they've removed some of the improvements that were approved previously, including, you know, the site access improvements that were contingent on the buildout of Ryder Farm, Ryder Farm Road, I think it is, which should still be shown on this plan. And I don't think, unless the board has changes, a change in their opinion on that, and I'm sure Phil could weigh in as well, but certain things, the buildout of the site should still be similar to that prior approval. And I think our memo goes into some more detail about the specifics of those. We've requested the applicant provide additional information confirming compliance with the DOH approval. That permits a combined daily flow of 4,500 gallons per day from the two school buildings. We'd like to see the two operable wells clearly identified on the plan in addition to the approved treatment works and the service connections to each building. The well supply quantity and quality should be confirmed. And one of our larger comments, I think, is on the wastewater disposal. So we do take exception to the current status of the connection to OCSD. In our opinion, that was integral to the prior approval and the expansion of this building. It was part of the resolution, it was shown on the plans, and the applicant made a good faith effort at that time to pursue permitting from the county. They received approval for that connection, but it hasn't been constructed. So I think that's something that the applicant should address with you. And in our opinion, until the septic systems on-site are proven, really, the plan should rely on that connection. I think that's important. We still have comments on the fire protection tanks, which in the applicant's correspondence, they say they're going to address. On drainage, the plan should show the previously approved stormwater facilities. There were dry wells for each addition that were proposed. The status of the current one for the addition that was constructed, and the one that's before you should be shown. We'd like to understand better the status of the detention pond and the other stormwater management facilities that were constructed previously. And if necessary, we recommend that maintenance be included as part of your action.
Those are fully constructed and operational at this point.
Right, I mean, just, it's been some time since they were constructed. We'd like to understand if they're being maintained and what the status is now.
Okay, I mean, they're fully, I, I mean, the site is fully operational now. It's used daily as a school, and the drain, there are no drainage issues that I'm aware of. This building's not gonna add to any great volume.
Well, at least the
I mean, I understand you wanna put the proposed drainage remediation for the addition, but
Well, and also
what was done previously, I believe, was viewed by the building department. We didn't as-built it, so it's kind of difficult to, for us to ascertain exactly what is in the grounds.
I think any inspection, I mean, at least for the detention facility, could be performed, and, you know, just an assessment of how it's functioning, you know, if it's silted, things like that, we'd wanna know. And then again, the dry well system for the addition that was constructed, I mean, it was part of the approved plan. I think it's pertinent for the board to understand how the site is functioning, and if that was constructed, and how it's operating. We had some comments on drafting of the parking areas, but Phil has commented on the adequacy of the available and proposed parking, so we defer mostly on, to him on that. The applicant should show the pedestrian corridors, the walkways and crosswalks on the plan, especially those proposed for this addition. And then, like I noted previously, there were access improvements that were contingent on the construction of Ryder Farm Road. And if the board wishes to carry forward, you know, those plans and improvements with this, with this action, we think that's appropriate. And just a last minor comment, it's most likely a drafting error, but the municipal boundary lines were shifted, and I'd like to understand.
Actually, that's on the county as opposed to us. We use the updated, the county uses their file map system for determining the, and we used it, and it shifted.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Well, that's gonna need to be
They're updating those maps constantly, so
Sure, well, that needs to be confirmed on the plan, whatever it is as adequate, so.
Yeah, the county can't really just change the boundary, all right?
Something's not right.
You know, the mapping department doesn't have that authority.
I would just state that the boundary lines, as proposed by the counties, aren't that rigid. They're not delineated that well, I should say.
Well, I think you need to review whatever you need to review of various county maps to ascertain which is the most accurate of the boundary lines.
Again, we've contacted the county about it, and they say to use the current. So I will recheck and verify with them and get that
Okay, and if so, then I think you need to be putting a note on there that the boundary lines are as directed by the county.
Okay.
And I mean, some of the, that line is co-terminous with lot lines.
If I may add on that, I did a lot of research, actually. We did have a conversation about another property. There is a lot of conflicts, and I will provide them with the information that you need. I think that's very helpful, that he will be able to determine something.
Sure.
Thank you.
That's all I have, unless the board has any questions.
The fire protection tank, how did we come up with the gallonage?
Um, it was part of the prior approvals.
Right. Okay, so I'm seeing if we're adding square footage, we probably don't wanna add gallons.
So I think, since this was considered previously, this addition, I think at that time, the gallonage incorporated the two proposed additions. But we can look into it a little further. That's, that's one of the things I think that hasn't changed with the prior
I believe that's correct, but we'll confirm that.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we have adequate water there.
But it is essential that we know exactly what is being proposed as far as the addition, whether or not it's a 4,000 or 7,000 or something else.
I'm sorry.
There is uncertainty as to whether or not you're expanding it by 4,000 or some 7,000, or
No, no, the existing building is the 7,800, and the new addition is 4,000 and a 2,000-square-foot footprint. So it's two stories for a total of 4,000.
So it's 4,000.
Yeah.
Were you saying that you should be showing us
The parking analysis.
connections for this?
Yes.
Natalie, again, I mean, I sound like I'm confused all the time, and I try not to be, but... So the map that we had at the last submission, the buildings were numbered differently.
Yes.
Buildings disappeared. I took the liberty of removing some of the buildings that were, one was destroyed by fire, another was, there were trailers that were labeled that are no longer exist on the plan.
So then all the buildings were
The board asked for an updated plan, so I did that. I let, tried to leave the numbers alone the best I could. I could put it back to where they're placed.
No, I just, going on, looking at your memo, and I'm trying to find the, I wasn't really sure about the building placement, 'cause on the map that we have for this submission, it says existing school, building number two. On the last submission, that was building number three.
That's right, yep.
And I think that, to simplify it, the plan you had last time wasn't really a new plan. It was just handing in the last
Correct. We were trying to, we were trying to get the, since this was already an approved site plan, we were trying to get it re-approved as simply as possible. We were asked to provide updated as-built conditions, so that's what we've done.
And obviously, the problem with taking the old plan and handing it in is what you wanna prove now is if the, what, it's very different now than it was going to be.
No, I understand that, but, Natalie, in your comments, you know, you're talking about building number three. I think it was one of the comments.
I think, you know, just, 'cause you're absolutely right, and the building numbers did change, and I thought I went through and updated them all accordingly, but I think that was supposed to reflect building number two.
That's, okay, that was, that was what I was trying to get at.
Yep.
Okay, so
My apologies.
'Cause that's, I was trying to match it, and I was like, wait a minute, where am I not seeing?
Sorry.
Nope, that's, okay.
That, for the applicant's notes, there is an arrow, error in our memo, so.
Tommy, you had a question to ask, I thought I heard you asked Natalie.
Yeah, no, I could just ask Natalie about the, that she's recommended they do have this sort of, be part of it.
On the existing 7,800, you know how many students attend that? Yeah, would be helpful, and then on the proposed 4,000, how many additional students are you?
I don't believe they're, they're going to be adding any more students to the, to the building.
All right, well, they can just confirm.
Is that, is that, yeah. Okay.
Thanks.
He'll confirm, he'll confirm that. That's the way it was explained to me, there are no students being added.
If I could just ask a question, no, it's not my turn yet, but if, if what exists is 7,800 square feet, and you're adding 4,000, why does it say in the parking analysis table that when it's done, it's going to be 19,600? You see what I mean, in the parking analysis table, there's a total line, and it says 19,600. 'Cause 7,800 plus 4,000 is only 11,800.
So the existing building and MICFA is all, is not 7,800, it's 14,000? 15,600?
15,600?
15,600.
Okay, then in that table, then
Those are four, right?
Yes.
I guess, I guess what we have, we have to correct that, too. The existing building, four numbers?
These don't, these say building size, they don't say footprint size.
They included the second phase addition. So we'll verify that.
Yeah.
But in either case, it does, it appears to have two mark orders.
Well, one of the, one of the issues that we have on a lot of applications now is it's being represented that the size of a building is X, and that X ends up to only be the footprint. That's not the size of the building. So when you represent what the square footage is for the building, it has to be for the entire building and not just the foot, it's actually irrelevant almost what the footprint is when you're dealing with what is the size of the building. No, just, it just needs to be clarified.
I will clarify this.
Okay.
And it certainly has nothing to do with the amount of parking, because, you know, the, otherwise, the Empire State Building, you know, would be really small building, 'cause it's got, it's only about half a block.
Well, I mean, for the parking analysis.
Yes.
So then is the addition 4,000 square feet, or is it 8,000?
The square, the addition's 4,000 square feet.
So it's 2,000?
Yes.
It's a 2,000-square-foot, two stories high. All right? And I will verify the previous numbers for building four, meaning the old addition plus the, I'm sorry, the previous addition plus the existing building.
You know, what's pretty chart, Grant? Maybe a little, maybe a little box on the side.
I, I, I understand.
I believe in the kiss, the kiss method, keep it simple. Maybe just a little box, existing, proposed, total.
Got it.
Good.
We'll, we'll get it, we'll get it straight.
I mean, we're not trying to get lost in minutia, but it's kind of a big, it's kind of a big point.
And you never have to tell us the building footprint, really.
Right.
You do have to tell us the coverage.
So that is square footage.
That'll add, that'll add square footage.
You've been here for these times, even though there's nothing in it, it still counts because you can still put, potentially put stuff in it.
So the 15,6 isn't with the basement?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think they're gonna come back to us with a, maybe a nice little chart.
So square footage for each floor.
We'll, we'll clarify.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Other than square footage. I think we beat that horse a little bit. What else?
Sure, you should have a memorandum from us dated July 28th. Our first comment was our confusion over the square footages, and I won't go over that. Our second comment was that the, was really simply that the first plan set that expired had six sheets, and you've only given us one sheet for this re-application. So we, I think we should see all six sheets redone, you know? Or if they're the same, staple them to the top sheet, because
The six sheets are already part of the record, and they're built. For example, the six sheets included the layout for the septic fields for building two that we got health department approval on and did that work on, and all the details. At this point, having the detail sheets adds nothing to the site plan for the 4,000-square-foot building. I mean, for the overall
The problem is that those expired, so they're not, they're in the record as an expired plan set, so if you
At the end of the day, the plan set has to all, whether it's the same thing with a new date on it, it has to be what's current, 'cause eventually, when this project moves forward to completion and approval, those are the plans that get signed, and those are what's gonna go
Fair enough, but what I'm, all I'm trying to say is
Sheets two through six are expired.
The septic systems and the pump chambers and the tanks are all in.
But you want
And in our show on the plan, and the details aren't really necessary.
Well, I get what you're saying, I'm gonna defer to what the consultant's
I think there are some details that definitely need to be shown on the plan associated with the stormwater detention system for this particular addition, and any site improvements associated with this addition, absolutely. And then also, anything that hasn't been constructed, that should be constructed in the future. There are things on the plan, the prior approval.
Expansion areas, etc., but not necessarily, not necessarily
The last
The detailed septic system out, it has to be done by the plan approved by the health department. That's a requirement, it's not something we can
The last sentence of my comment, too, is a new plan set with all six sheets should be submitted so it is clear what new construction is proposed at this time, and that all existing construction that is proposed for after-the-fact approval is also identified. Because you constructed some things that were on the expired plans that now you need to legitimize by getting the new plan signed, in my opinion. So that's my recommendation.
That's completely up to whatever you guys need, 'cause there, you're the ones going through it, and if you're requesting it, then
I defer to you.
So be it.
Well, I mean, we, can we submit the old plan into the record as, without redoing it and use this for, I mean, this is
If that's what's actually there
If Jonathan's, if that's what's there, then yes, right? But Natalie's making
Well, this, this is what What I'm saying is, this is what's there.
Right.
I mean, the details for the proposed pump chamber aren't pertinent anymore because they're constructed. The septic tank isn't pertinent, it's already constructed.
If it's what's there, and you can stamp it, as an engineer, that that's what's there and it is there, then I would think that it'd be, it should be submitted because your previous plan set expired. And now you want to get plans approved. So that there's an approved plan for everything, when you're done with this process now, you'll have an approved plan in the cabinet that matches what's there.
There's a small question of semantics that I'm gonna have to ask Rick to opine on. So the prior application to this addition are shown, but whether or not the details that were submitted for the approval where a portion of it was constructed, I'm not sure that that's relevant necessarily to this approval.
It would seem to me that all of the details on the prior plan approval that has expired that are necessary for the present approval has to be included in here. Now, whether that's on one plan, one plan sheet or six plan sheets and you indicate which ones are already existing and as-built and the remainder of the details deal with an issue that... For the 4,000 square foot addition. But there has to be, and I think what's being stressed here is that there has to be all the necessary details supporting the 4,000 square feet, whether or not they were in the prior one, prior approval, or they're part of your present plan sheet.
Right. I'm just stating that the details, for example, for the septic system were approved, stamped and sealed by the health department.
But as to the 4,000 square feet, that's expired. It's no...
But they weren't pertinent to the 4,000 square feet or required for the 4,000 square feet. They're actually for building two. All that septic detail work was for building two, not for building four. So it's... I can... I would say that we've submitted into the record the health department approval letter and plans and they've been constructed.
I would like to point out that although those septic systems have been constructed and improved since the prior approval, we've noted deficiencies, at least on a visual, a surface level aspect of it, and we've requested that they be verified, that di-test be performed and the adequacy of the septic tanks confirmed. As far as the expansion areas, they should be shown on the plan, this plan, and any details necessary for that as well as the stormwater facilities serving this addition.
Okay.
This is... And this is really my only other comment is that this isn't going to be approved very quickly by the board. So I think you go ahead and you submit revised plans and we'll see how Natalie and Jonathan believe that you've properly incorporated it. And the reason that it's not going to be approved quickly is that as opposed to all the other applications you've received tonight, which are exempt from the moratorium, this application is not exempt from the moratorium. So although the board can continue to review it, there can be no approval by this board until the moratorium has been lifted.
Even as a priorly approved plan?
Correct. The... I guess maybe I'll just keep moving forward in my memo or if you want to discuss anything.
Yeah.
On our comment three, we had noticed that in the county health department, they set a flow limit for 4,500 gallons per day. And then on this newest plan, you have a proposed load of 5,352 gallons per day for buildings two and four. So on the face of it, that's concerning and perhaps we're dealing with bad labels or...
We'll review that later. We'll clarify that.
But it seems like you're over the load from the 2013. And then I hadn't seen the elevations or architectural details for the addition and you said you had submitted that.
They were actually part of the original approval and we don't have... This is a question for you, is can we submit photographs of the existing building, provide those as it's a...
Is the 4,000 square foot building addition, 4,000 addition built already?
No, the existing... It's being attached to an existing building.
Okay.
Will match in appearance and construction, the existing building.
Okay.
So in other words, if I give you a picture of the existing building, that's what the new elevation will look like for that building.
Well, you can't... It can't... It's not the same. The addition's only 4,000 square feet, so it's going to look different than the existing building.
We can have a 3D rendering for that building. We'll provide that.
I guess in order to... Since your approval expired and you're asking for ARB approval of the addition, we need the elevations and architectural details of the addition.
I think before we move forward, I want to ask the board a question. I was actually... I missed the previous meeting a couple months ago. I wasn't there and I just got involved back into this project. So we had a discussion with the management in the school. The first intent while submitting this application was that while since this has been already approved, it will have like a very light review by the board and we will have a quick approval. And I fully understand things have changed during the years. The board has a lot of concerns and I see now it's not like that we have the old plan and that's going to be approved and stamped. There's a lot of background review that the board wants to review. So based on that, there is a possibility and I don't see that this will delay my project and whatever, it's up to the board. The board will tell me it's a big difference if we're changing the footprint of that building. If we want to make it a little bit bigger, it's not like we want to double it or something, but based on the current uses, we have some designs. We might be wanting to make it maybe 5,000 square feet of footprint or whatever, 10,000 square foot buildings. Let's... Not 10, I'm sorry. 4,000, so let's say 6,000 square feet total or such. Is there any... I wasn't involved in the prior approval. I don't know what restrictions came up on that approval. Is there any restrictions here that will restrict us from adding a bigger addition here?
Don't we bring another seeker review depending on the size?
The seeker review will be changed as a result.
But still not significant because we are more than 4,000, so...
If it's going to be 10,000 square feet or greater, it's going to change the seeker.
If it's going to be under 10,000, then it will...
Then it wouldn't change the seeker.
Okay.
Now, the other thing is that you have the ability to go ahead and propose whatever you want to propose that may... Let's say you propose another 10,000 square feet. The board's going to review that and it may or may not reduce it depending upon lots of various factors, right? But there is no specific cutoff that says you can't have more than 8,000 square feet or 4,000 square feet, whatever it is. There's nothing that prohibits you from making an application for whatever you want and then the board is going to review it.
Okay, so that's very important. So I think, I don't want to waste anyone's time. I understand you have a review letter. I'm not sure if we want to go through that letter now and spend the time because I see what's involved in the background and that. I think we shall... We will go back. We'll meet with the management. We'll make a decision on that. We'll come back with some more updated stuff and exactly what we want.
But I think it's important for you to take into consideration the review memos that you do have on this one because those are still going to obtain as far as their relevance.
The question would just be, do we want to discuss that in detail? We have the review memos. We'll take that in consideration and definitely at the next submission, we'll have... There will be some different discussions or different concerns.
But what's the status of the moratorium?
It was recently enacted.
Just enacted, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to point... I want to discuss that too. So my question is, I understand, I'm not an attorney and probably maybe we should get an attorney involved. Is that something that is... Does the town, the village board have the power to waive from the moratorium out due to if we provide due to the loop or something?
I'd have to review the moratorium again myself. I didn't draft it. I have looked at it before, but I don't have a present recollection of whether or not there's a waiver provision in there. I just don't recall.
I don't have all seven things memorized, sorry.
Yeah, so but it's... I can tell you that there are exceptions to the moratorium, but yours does not fit into it. The other prior applications for various reasons fit into that.
I will need to do some action to get a... To get an exception, basically. It's not like we are...
No, that's what I don't know is whether or not there's a waiver provision whereby you can ask the board to exempt you. There are specific exemptions that are set forth. Your application doesn't fit any of those. So it's subject to the moratorium. I just don't know whether or not there's a... Some moratoriums, but not all moratoriums, there are provisions where you can ask for relief from the moratorium in addition to whatever exemptions are set forth and I don't know whether or not... And trying to remember it in my head whether or not there is such a provision in this moratorium.
So I will do the research on that too so we know which...
Is there a timeframe on the moratorium?
I think it's initially six months, but it can be extended.
Yeah, but...
The option to expand.
Yeah, exactly. So it's not six months.
And to answer your question with the ARB, I mean, you've gone through ARB review in front of us before, so do what you traditionally do. It's a set of drawings that has the dimensions, what it's going to look like and let's... We're going to stay consistent with what we've done, whether it's a residential or a commercial building, we've always asked for those drawings. I don't think we've ever taken just a picture with...
They were actually submitted last time.
He's talking about the... So we will have... It's fine. It's fine. We will have anyway updated plans and updated drawings regardless. We're staying with the 4,000.
Samples, et cetera.
I will provide you everything, so that's not a problem.
You got it. I think you were the only one handling all this application. The rest of us are all new, so while he may remember pieces of the application, for all of us, this is the first time we're really seeing it.
We have the story in here.
Yeah. But yeah, we're going to do what we normally do for every application. You've been in front of us enough that you know what we're looking for.
And I would just like to stress that my issues with the application at this point are really organizational and process, you know. What expired? What are you submitting now? What should you show? And, you know, we really understand that the school is in existence and so forth. It's really, most of these issues that we're raising are really process and submittal issues.
And also, I'd like to just add, if you are planning on expanding the footprint of the new addition, there are other site plan implications that haven't been touched upon in our memos, right? So you should consider it as if it's an entirely new application and how the impact of the new square footage would impact working and then drainage and other things.
I understand. I don't think it affects drainage because the area is anyway paved unless we'll need to add more paving area, but we'll look into that.
Coverage calculations, things like that.
I got it.
Okay.
We'll look into that.
And if you don't mind, can both of you just state your names one more time? I apologize. I...
My name is Joel Mann from Brahman Associates.
Thank you.
Patrick Cotton from MJS Engineering.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it is a good question. If you... If there are no additional students proposed, then why are we making this school bigger? Just you're offering more classes? We want to spread out more?
It's basically... It's not that I don't know. I don't know. I didn't want into the details. His question was originally how many students are going to add there and I don't know...
How many are going today to the existing 7,800 square foot and are there additional students for that? What's happening?
My understanding is that there will be, so I will get you the numbers based on the proposal, give you the numbers.
But the existing is 15,600.
Yeah.
And I... No one's trying to harp on it, but it's going to impact the traffic statement as well. So that's why we need... You need to come up with a number because it's going to drive the application and other aspects going forward.
We'll make sure that we're covering... We have now the... Like I said, the initial mindset was we have an old plan, we just want to reapprove it. It's not... I understand that's not the case here, so we'll gather together, we'll give you all accurate and updated information.
And with respect to seekers, just for purposes of you planning, because it may affect how you plan, if you want to avoid a different seeker designation, is that it's a type two action right now because it deals with educational institutions and expanding of those existing facilities by less than 10,000 square feet of floor area, which would include basements and things like that. It's gross floor area, okay?
I understand. So as long as I'm basically... If I'm adding another 1,000 square feet for the footprint, I'm still good. It's 9,000.
We just have to look at it. But it's gross square footage. I didn't want there to be, you know, misunderstood.
Appreciate the help.
And again, if... Right now, it's a type two action, so seeker's finished. But if you wanted to expand it more than that, it doesn't mean it can't be done. It just means it would be an unlisted action and we deal with seeker, that's all.
Okay.
Anything else? No? Everybody's good? Before your next submission?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did have one other item on the agenda tonight, but we did receive via fax. Dear Chairman Gerber, I represent the above-named applicant. This is for Eastgate Management, 300 Farber's Road. Based on my conversation with Barry regarding the items to be addressed and the technical comments provided to the board, I am requesting this matter be taken off tonight's agenda for further submission to address. Please confirm. Thank you for your courteousness.